The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First People's traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the sphere of the intent of the treaties of all First Peoples and nations that call this place law. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, I would like to call this meeting Committee of the Whole, March twenty-sixth, to order. Council, any changes to the agenda, deletions, additions? Administration?
Nothing from administration.
Thank you very much. And with that, we have a motion to accept the agenda. And we have a motion from Councilor Haas. And we will hold question, vote on that. My committee adopt the agenda as presented. All those in favor or all those who don't know?
Favor, Madam Chair, I'm not keeping personal reason.
And that is carried. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our citizen minute with council, and we do have one person wanting to speak. I do have to read the symbol heading before we come out. Minute with council provides an opportunity where residents can address council regarding issues, events, celebrations, and concerns. To ensure a constructive and welcoming environment, please abide by the following guidelines. Keep your remarks concise and limited to one minute. Address the chair of the meeting when speaking to council. Avoid asking questions as this is not a question-answer period. And always maintain respectful tone and language. And I always have to say to people, I am hearing you, Karen. You will be addressing me, so you want to speak up. So when you speak, if you could, give us your name. And your minute starts now, sir.
Okay, my name is Red Budog. And I'm here concerning the beautification on the CN in front of Hinton. I oppose it completely. That has been there for how long? You're calling it, it's an eyesore. An eyesore, what? I drove by there today. There is no eyesore there. There's just some vehicles parked there. So why do we have to spend this kind of money on something that I don't believe should be even involved in our community at this point in time? Maybe later in the future, ten or twenty years? Because it's been fifty-some years now that it's been like that. Why is it changing all of a sudden? And why the big price? And that'll come up later on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Judge, or anybody coming in on Zoom who wants you to speak? No, there's nothing. Thank you very much. Do we have any delegations today? Miss Dennis and no delegations. We're going to move into reports from administration. And we'll start with on page, in your agenda, page three. First report is five point one, and that is the beautification of Highway sixteen capital project update. And I'll turn this over to our CEO.
Thank you, Chair, and I will turn this one over to Ms. Juke.
And thank you, Chair, and through the rest of the committee, I will also in turn turn this over to Parks Recreation and Healthier Manager Heather Wade. Thank you all. Committee, this report is before you this afternoon. Based on a direction from previous meetings of council on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, where council had asked administration to look into some options for the beautification of the location stretching from L W Restaurant through to the intersection of Switzer and Rob, pardon me, Switzer and Highway sixteen. Three options were explored: one, wood fence; two, artistic panel fence; and three, the concrete barrier. Options ranging from wood fence being kind of the cheapest option that we were able to find, all the way through to the concrete barriers. With the ultimate recommendation, should council wish for more information and more precise costing to be the panel, artistic panel option, as it actually was a good blend as part of the options explored with respect to artistic beautification and the pride point in terms of operational maintenance and lifespan of the asset. I can take questions.
Thank you. And Councilor Taylor?
I'd like to move option three, that we accept the report on the beautification of Highway sixteen capital project for information and cancel the project, please. Can I speak to that?
Yes, you certainly may.
I think it's important to embrace who we are in Hinton. We're an industrial town, which we be proud of our history. Historically, our town is growing because of the railway, the coal industry, the oil and gas, and more recently, the paper mill. Let's embrace it and cancel this project, especially in light of the extreme prices. There's so many more important things we can do with this kind of money, you know, snow removal, sewer to water infrastructure. And in addition, I haven't heard I haven't heard anybody in this council or the last council I was on talk about the aesthetics of that stretch of road. So I don't believe it's people that have talked to me as one of their priorities. Thank you.
Sir? Alex, we're Sasha.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be speaking in favor of the proposed motion. Several reasons. I was okay with supporting the concept of some plantings along there for minimal cost, but these options are all, to me, inappropriately expensive commensurate with the benefit that they would provide. Seeing as how elevated the highway is over where this fence could sit, it would have to be an awfully tall fence to even be blocking any of the view. And I also agree that it's not particularly required. Several years ago, CN Yard was quite a mess. There was a lot of debris and unused equipment there. But at least again, it undertook a cleanup exercise. They vastly improved the aesthetics of it. It's not a visual impact that it was, and I see no reason to continue to pursue this even at the cheapest option. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sir? I will speak to this. I will support your motion, Councilor Taylor. I feel we have way more processing matters and how to deal with. And another thing is, I drive that highway. I drive it, and I am, I'm not looking at the tracks. I'm looking at the beautiful hills, they all green. So that's all I have to say about. Council, anything else before I call the question? My committee accept the report on the beautification Highway sixteen capital project for information and cancels the project. Please vote now. And then is carried. Thank you very much. Council, anything else on this agenda item before we launch? Then we're moving on to actually five point two. That's found on page nine of your agenda, amending the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee Terms of Reference.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn this over to Ms. Way as well.
Thank you, CEO Canastic, through to the remainder of committee. This document is before you this afternoon, based on the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three direction from council to review the Terms of Reference, specifically council was inquiring about the composition or the membership roles of the committee. Since that time, administration and the committee have sat down to review the Terms of Reference. They provided recommendations for the composition, which forms this report and the ultimate attachments with the draft Terms of Reference in there. Some highlights. Mainly, the changes you'll see are, like I said, with respect to the composition, changing to allow for five town of Hinton residents at large, one indigenous representative, so maintaining that from the last Terms of Reference, as well as the committee found it important to continue with one youth representative. Further to that, the committee has been challenged with some attendance issues, so the committee's asked for that to be explicitly spelled out in the Terms of Reference. The committee has always been subject to that clause as part of the council committee's bylaw. However, they did ask that it be, like I said, spelled out. Other changes include some changes to section nine and appendix D, as well as the definitions, as some of the definitions are no longer required, as we remove some of those specific roles from the bylaw and associated Terms of Reference. The changes are highlighted in attachment one with the proposed Terms of Reference and bylaw as attachment two. I can take questions at this time. Thank you.
So I'll start this off on page five of nine of your report. Five point five. Town Council will appoint up to nine. Should that be seven or nine?
On page, sorry, page five of the report?
Yes.
Which page of the agenda?
On the agenda, it would be to twenty-two, not way of.
Three of seven. Yeah. If I may, yeah, it's the five point five of the revised highlighted appendix, appendices.
Through the chair, I believe I can answer this. The nine members would be consistent with the composition that's located in four point one, as we do have a town attended council representative, five residents at large, one youth, one indigenous, technical advisory staff, and administrative support staff as delegated, so including the nine members would include, I believe, the staff members that are appointed to that committee.
Sorry for clarity, CEO. It is intended to be seven. The two members of administration don't count as voting members. It is just an oversight on my part, not changing the nine to seven. Okay, thank you.
So it is seven, correct? All right, thank you very much. Council, any questions? And Councilor Haas?
I just want to point out one other change, if I may. The role of the committee chairperson, it was a decision of the committee that that the council member or alternate be appointed the chairperson. Because they felt that it was a better fit. They're more, the council members are more used to running meetings, so they wanted to make that just official, so there doesn't have to be an election or a appointed at the first meeting, so. So I just wanted to put that one up here. Last clarifying question?
Certainly.
Did they voted for that? Did they vote for it for like the two-year term of this committee, or did they vote for that for a change in the roles of responsibility? So it'll be every October because of the organizational meeting, depending on what council member is appointed. But then it'll be just an automatic chairperson is that, that, that appointed council member. So they're okay with us permanently changing the Terms of Reference to make it a that the committee chairperson be a council member? That's correct. Okay, thanks.
So Council, I have looking for a motion on this, please? Councilor Haas?
I'd like to move that committee refers the matter of amendments to the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee bylaw eleven fifty-eight to a future regular meeting of council. And if I can speak to it.
Certainly.
Yeah, a lot of thought was put into this, especially around the membership. And the group felt it was important to just open up, to be more open to the entire community, not so restrictive to certain areas. But we still wanted to highlight the importance of an indigenous representation, but also youth as well, so. But other than that, you know, everything else is pretty minor. I mean, the, the committee bylaw states the amount of attendance. We just wanted to make sure that it was highlighted in this Terms of Reference as well for the members. So yeah, so I, I think this is a better look forward and less members as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Sasha?
Madam Chair, I just have a question for administration, I believe. If this passes, will there be a notice for new applications for members of the Beaver Boardwalk Committee, considering the members at large has expanded like a bit?
Thank you for the question, Councilor Sasha, through to the entire committee. We have one application that's been sitting waiting for this amendment to the Terms of Reference, anticipating that it would kind of widen things for who could be applicable to apply. So we won't do an advertisement, or we will do an advertisement just to catch anybody else that may be left. However, that one individual would fit, as we've reviewed within here, and then we have a full committee.
Councilor Taylor?
I'd like to make an amendment that we modify section five point five. We change the nine to seven. As suggested. You said that was appropriate.
That. Thank you, Councilor Taylor. However, my five point five is not jiving with what you guys are reading now. I'm looking at section four, under composition and terms. Seven community members specifically. Five be residents at large, one youth representative, and one indigenous representative. Those are the codes that would be a call for application. Then there's the appointing from council. Making a total committee of eight, as the council chair does get a vote. So it is five residents at large, seven community members, and that's in section four point one point two.
Great.
Are you also recording that one up in for the?
Well, I'm looking at appendix C, the Terms of Reference document, which I thought was the document that we're looking at of interest, because that's the one yellow. Is that not the document we're looking at?
Which one? Go ahead, Mr. Juke.
So through the chair to the rest of committee, I believe the difficulty may be that there's in fact two Terms of Reference attached to this report. One is a highlighted Terms of Reference standalone, and the second one is contained within the entire amending bylaw, which is presented here just for your preview. And I believe that the, the one that is correct is the whole amending bylaw add attachments.
Go ahead, sir.
In either case, there are two documents. You are correct. One is yellow and one isn't. Both have five point five. And in both versions, the five point five needs to be corrected from nine to seven.
Oh, I see it now.
I'm moving that we correct the statement, town council will appoint up to nine public members of the BB OC on the biannual basis, or as required.
Correct.
Change the nine to seven, if we could, please. Thank you. We can change it in both documents if you'd like.
Yeah, well, in the original motion, that that committee refers the matter of the amendments, so it will be captured. And then
I think you would prefer to vote on, to have this amendment. And then we will vote on that when we can be, be motions.
Yeah, I thought I was making an amendment.
Go ahead, sir.
Through the chair, to the rest of the committee. So when I read five point five, it refers to four point one. Nine may be appropriate, just because it outlines that on the committee will be one town, town attended council representative, plus one alternate, plus seven community members included on the committees for a total of nine. So I believe that is appropriate to keep this in mind. I don't think there's any issues with it. We're just including the, the separate section of the town council representatives and their alternative, including that in the total of five point five. So I think we're okayed, or I'm okay with five point five as as long as we're okay with four point one and the breakdown of who's going to be actually.
Okay, I'll throw my amendment based on that explanation, if that makes sense.
Councilor Sasha?
Yeah, I'm in opposition to withdrawing the amendment. I can speak to it if you'd like.
Go ahead, please.
It's confusing.
Yeah.
At the least, because four point two aligns seven community members. And then five point five, it says nine, but it says nine public members. So it's confusing at the least. So I would either, I would either want us to move this or amend it, as Councilor Taylor suggested. So I'm in opposition to the removal of motion.
Go ahead, sir.
Through the chair, the one thing we could do is just to eliminate the word public members. So we're just saying town council will point up to nine members, because town council does still appoint the council representatives to the sport as well. That would just eliminate any advocacy on those sections.
Councilor Taylor?
Or we, we, we go vote against getting rid of this, and we stick with the seven public members, which is what the document says. So I'm going to join Councilor Sasha and vote against withdrawing this.
So you do not want your amendments to be withdrawn?
I think it's already out there because we're discussing it. So we're voting whether to accept it or withdraw it, and I'm going to vote to not, to keep it there. The amendment was originally that to count the section five point five be changed from town council will appoint up to seven public members.
Council, you just got to make sure that she can count your words you said.
Yeah, to seven, basically. Right. Now that's
Is that correct, Councilor?
Yeah, that changed the nine to seven.
So also any more discussion on this amendment? And seeing none, I'm going to call to the question. Councilor Taylor has made an amendment. Amendments, amendments, section five point five, change from nine public members to seven public members.
Yes. So we're, may I ask a question? Clarifying question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Certainly.
We're voting on whether to add that amendment to the original amendment, original motion, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Council, any more discussion on this before I call the question? And nothing? It kind of reads odd. Amendment, section five point five, a change from nine public members to seven public members. Please vote now. And then is carried. Thank you. And I'll go back to the new motion. So council, has everybody read this motion? Any questions? And Councilor Sasha?
I don't have any questions, so. I'd just like to move that committee refers to the matter of amendments. Oh, this is already moved. Sorry, my apologies.
So I'm going to, if there's no other discussion, I'm going to call the question. But committee refers to the matter of amendments to the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee bylaw one one five eight to a future regular meeting of council. And that's section five point five, change from nine public members to seven public members. Please vote now. And that is carried. Council, before we move on to our next action item, is there any more discussion on that point two? And there is nothing. We're going to move on to report from admin, five twenty-three. Clarify the scope of the twenty twenty-four FCSS comparative analysis. And that is on page twenty-seven of your agenda. And I'm turning this over to the administration.
Thank you, Chair. I will turn this over to Ms. Juke.
Thank you, CEO Canastic, and through the chair to the rest of committee. This report is before committee to outline a draft scope for the request for proposal, which will procure the FCSS comparative analysis that the town is to undertake in twenty twenty-four, and take direction on any clarifications the committee feels are important. To reiterate today's report, community services tabled a level of service policy for the FCSS service branch in twenty twenty-three. Committee and council reviewed and discussed the policy multiple times, but did not feel they had sufficient information to warrant either adoption or amendment. Administration returned additional information, and finally, in October, was directed to provide an analysis of Hinton's social services in comparison to those of our comparator municipalities. After the resolution, which you see restated in today's report, committee added that at least four comparative municipalities be tapped for information, and that the consultant include recommendations in their report. So to ensure the most effective outcomes for the project, administration is asking if committee could confirm two things. One is that the scope of the comparison is outlined on page two of the report. Is accurate and detailed enough to get the information that you're looking for? Or should it be amended or even generalized? And secondly, if the description of the recommendations that county asked for, sorry, committee asked for, is looking to hit, will hit the points that you had in mind at the time. And so with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Councilor Haas?
I don't comment yet on the content, and my question is to the budget. Have, has, have we, our administration looked at what currently is here? Is that within the twenty thousand dollar budget that is, and if we add to it, is, is administration prepared to look at, is it going to cost more than what is allotted a budget, budget for this this project or this report?
So through the chair to rest of committee, there's really no telling at this point. The twenty thousand dollars is a placeholder amount that was put in budget. The request for proposal will return that information, and that can come back to council as well or committee. If you'd like to perhaps amend scope at that time to amend the costs as well. It's difficult to say.
So if I may follow up, so what we're seeing here right now, we don't yet know if that is going to, twenty thousand dollars will cover what is here. We're not, we don't know that for certain.
That's not the information that we have for you today, that's right.
Thank you.
So a question I have for administration is, and I, I'm not seeing it here. I'd like to know how our FCSS functions as compared to other municipalities, because we do do things differently. Other municipalities have a, your council sit on the FCSS board. Me right now are in their board. So I don't really know how to add that to the scope. What wording to use, so I go ahead, please.
So thank you, and through the chair to the rest of council. The, the fact that is that Hinton does not actually have an FCSS board at this time. I've traced that board through various appearances in council agendas and found where the board was no longer formed. It was actually it was, it was rescinded by the adoption of the council committee's bylaw. I think it's specifically in that bylaw rescinds that particular committee. Different iterations of the committee were brought forward to council and committee of the whole, following that, but none was adopted. So at this time, we do not have an actual board formed for FCSS advisory.
Thank you. Go ahead, CEO.
Through the chair, i- if there's an interest in looking at governance models when it comes to this particular service, that's something that we could do in-house. I think that there's a lot here to try and cover with the amount of money allocated, so you know, that's something that we could provide options for in the future, but I, I don't know if we need to look at this from a, from a governance. From a governance perspective, this was mainly focused on looking at the operations and the programming and services offered through these through this area. So. If council wants to, we could certainly look at governance options in the future.
So is that something you would need a motion to um? For it to become an action item for you to work on, or is it something you would just entertain?
Yes, it's at some point we would request a motion of council would like to look at the options related to uh. Governance for FCSS.
Excellent. I I'm still aware. I'm glad you brought that to our attention. I am. Counselor Taylor.
I have two items related to the scope of the contract for services. I'll deal with them. Could I deal with them uh? Um. With your permission, uh, one by one?
Certainly, there's two of them.
Um, one, um, first one is to amend the scope to include a comparison of staffing levels from employees and management. In comparator towns. I didn't see um that mentioned in the scope. So I would seek maybe uh your comment or uh that's your vote on whether we should include that or not include that. And then I'll mention and out I can talk if that passes or doesn't, I can go for the second topic.
So are you making a direction right now?
Yeah.
Okay, and John, we're gonna have to capture that. So uh, Counselor Taylor, your. Direction is that council committee seeking consensus to ensure that the scope also includes. A comparison of staffing levels on employees, including management and comparators.
Yeah, and staffing is a big part of the expense of this program, so I think it's uh very germane to have it included in the scope. So I seek your uh support for that uh. Addition, please. And I don't see it mentioned here. Like the number of staff in. Between the comparator tents.
Also, any discussion, conversation you was? I would call the question about creating consensus to ensure that the scope also includes a comparison. Of staffing levels of employees, including management and with comparator towns. Counsel, please vote no. And that's very. Your next one, sir?
Um. My next one, you might have to help me with the wording, but it's to amend the scope to include recommendations that improve. The uh efficiency. Of the F E F C S S. Within the existing budget or less. And what I'm referring to here is uh. What I see us doing is that we're in an exercise. Where we've gone over core funding by four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars. So we're at a million dollar range, whereas provincial government usually only funds, only funds five hundred thousand dollars for this. So we're paying three to four percent extra on our taxes in order to fund what basically amounts to provincial responsibilities. This is not an exercise to increase that problem and increase that burden on the taxpayers. This is an exercise to try to be more efficient. To try to stay within the extra budget. So when this report comes up with recommendations, I don't want to see recommendations that stay within the existing budget or less. That's what I'm trying to say there. That makes sense. I don't want to see recommendations that take us, uh, you know, the two hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses.
So while you're, while you're reading, that seems easy.
Okay. Uh, committee uh seeks consensus to amend the purpose of the comparative analysis to to amend. Uh, I, oh, I think I used the words to amend the scope to include uh. Recom. Uh, no, to amend the scope to include recommendations to improve. To include recommendations. That. Improve the efficiency of the FCSS program. Um. Within its existing budget or less. Yeah, take all that out. And the bottom sentence, sir?
Just correct. Sorry.
Uh, no, uh, program within the existing budget, uh, was let me read it. That committee uh reaches consensus to amend the scope. Um. The scope to include recommendations that improve the efficiency of the S S uh program within its existing budget or less. So, yeah. I think that's addressing the purpose a little bit more clearer of why we're undertaking this review to try to make it more efficient than comparison of surrounding towns.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Stausch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question. Is the intent of this motion to do something other than what's? Indicated in point B of the scope of. Contract or services is one of the points in there is to increase cost effectiveness. I don't know if that's, I guess, to administration, is that's, is this something that would be addressed in point B? Or if counselor Taylor's looking to. Achieve something different than general increase cost effectiveness. That would probably need to be reflected in that in motion.
So I'm very, this joke.
Thank you. Through the chair and the rest of committee, I believe that counselor Taylor's motion is. Doing something a little differently. The cost effectiveness of the service is obviously something that should be. Uh, that that the report should arrive at some description. Um thereof, but the the itemizing of existing budget or less is quite specific. Uh, cost effectiveness. It's synonymous, but this is more specific.
Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, those are the critical words, within the existing budget or less cost effectiveness. Because uh that statement B includes achieve other targets suggested by the analysis. Well, that could be spending more money. Is, are you okay with that? If you're okay with that, then vote against the 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 motion. The the exercise was to. Try to get control of this hundred percent over expenditure. And overreach by the provincial government into our social programs. And uh make it more efficient by reducing. Or at least not increasing the size of the budget. That's what the intent of that is. This isn't an exercise to. To grow this department or to grow with the expenditures. The words uh. Cost effectiveness aren't sufficient alone. To be clear enough. I don't think. And that's why I added those words. Within the existing budget or less.
I'm just gonna go, Counselor Haas.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to the motion. Um, I don't think, I don't see that the intent of this i- is at all. Looking at the curve, but it's looking at what our services are. And my. I guess. Objective is, it's not to spend more money, but I'd like to know, are the services that we're providing reasonable? But is there other services we could be providing? Because. The whole idea of doing a service level in depth and look at this, it would be just like we've done reports on other departments. We could. I'm gonna use transit as an example. We had many different options that included increasing the budget to X amount of dollars to improve transit. We decided as a council that was not something that we were interested in, but that then gives us a good. Layout of here's what you're providing, but you're you're fit and you don't have some services in this area that other communities have. And, you know, and and so then it's up to council whether or not we, because that's the endeavor I felt that this was, is to look at. What are we spending? Are we spending efficiently? And do we have the services? It might be reducing some services, but it also could be increasing. So I don't want to limit ourselves. I want a full picture. Uh, the the community wants to know what we're spending, how we're spending it, and if we're not spending enough. And and could be doing some core services compared to others. So I don't want to limit them to what the existing budget is or less. Not, that's not saying I want to spend more, but to me, this is uh handcuffing to get a full picture. Of of the FCSS in other communities compared to what ours are. So I'm I'm confident comfortable. With this, it's the what we find out with this. Moving forward uh and what we want to do as a council. So um. And this moment with that, I'm not gonna, it's it's too, it's too limiting to me. Uh, we want to have a full picture, so I'm not gonna support it.
I want to get this through.
Thank you, and through the committee, through the rest of council. It's difficult on the spot to provide definitions, but I will have to say that I don't think that cost effectiveness and efficiency are the same thing. Cost effectiveness is for the amount that you're spending, what is your measure of effectiveness? And efficiency is, can you do the same with less money? Or less resources in it, whatever the case may be. Generally speaking, I'd offer that up as a as a as a definition for council to consider. Cost effectiveness really speaks to how much is spent and how. What value do you get from your expenditures? Or is efficiency is they're doing a better job with less or less money or less resources? Essentially, I mean.
Counselor Taylor.
Well, words concerned with me here are service gaps and achieved targets suggested by the analysis. And I'm all in favor of doing that, so as we stick within the same budget. We got, if we get a, if we get a uh an item that we should provide, unless pick an item that's a lower priority that we shouldn't provide. But we're just, uh, we're just. Municipalities are crushing themselves with uh with debt by taking on provincial government responsibilities. We're a hundred percent over. We can't afford to go uh over the existing budget. That's what I think. The terms of reference of this study should be. We can always look for new new things, but at as a on a prioritized basis, of course.
Just have one quick question. Um, the provincial government puts in X amount of dollars to the FCSS. And then are we required within twenty percent of the? Uh, initial amount that the government put in. Is it twenty or thirty percent?
So thank you, and through the committee, through the chair to the rest of committee, the FCSS grant itself is a matching grant. You can't get any money unless you put up the amount that you have to match. And. I'm not a numbers person quite the same as others in the room, so I'll defer to the CEO of Canasik if he has any further comments on how that's actually calculated.
Through the chair, there's specific matching portion. I'm not aware of, off the top of my head, uh. Uh, we perhaps are still where it is, but I'm. Not aware. Thank you.
It's eighty twenty.
It is eighty twenty, yeah.
It is eighty twenty. And that would take us up to five hundred, five hundred forty thousand, which would be the core program, which is what they're referring to here when they say core. What we've done is we've taken this up to a one million dollar expenditure, and that includes the grants, but more more it includes. That up to four hundred thousand dollars of direct tax dollars that we put into this program that are provincial government responsibilities, and that's why I'm concerned about. Taking on uh more provincial government responsibilities, increasing the funding over that level.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, anything else? Um. Do I? True, sir? Oh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'm gonna be speaking in favor of the proposed motion. Uh, I think it's important to take a look at this through a lens of what we currently spend. Uh, it doesn't mean that there can't be recommendations made outside of that lens, but I think what we'll get out of that is a prioritized list of uh. What's important, what's redundant, and what should be taken care of by other government departments. If 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 the report winds up somewhere that we're falling short, then that can be a discussion of council at the time when the report comes back. But I think it's important to put parameter on it that we want for this to to come back. Uh, at a level that's equivalent to less than what we're currently spending to support it in success. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Haas.
I guess just a clarifying question. Um. With the wording of this, will we get those types of recommendations in this if they were to say? Over that, because I mean, right now it's saying with that existing budget or less, but. If we're giving them that parameter, then would we be getting? On the side as, you know, these are some recommendations based on what we've learned. Um, you know, you might consider an extra whatever, because again, I don't want to spend more money, but I just don't want to. Handcuff the possibilities, because. Maybe it is an extra that mean means a lot to our community. So I guess if that's possible, I'm I'm good with that, but.
Well, thank you, Chair, and through the rest of committee. I I guess it depends. If we're adding this. To the list of recommendations, potential recommendations that might be uh brought forward. Then I think we'll get a a nice wide scope that council can then pick and choose from. If you're limiting the recommendations to just this, that's a different uh impact. So I'd have to ask for your clarification on which one you're talking about.
Counselor Stausch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a counselor, I don't want to pick and choose. That's not my area of expertise. I have no idea. What's undersubscribed, what's oversubscribed, what's important to the community, what's not important to the community. I want a snapshot picture of services that we can provide. And these are the ones that are really important to the community. They're fully subscribed. Uh, then there maybe there's some fringe ones, maybe there's some ones that aren't. Aren't fully subscribed, so at the current budget level. This is what we feel is important to make sure it happens and continues moving forward. And uh, these are the ones that may, for whatever reason, may be able to be. Put by the wayside if they fall outside the the budget that's that's allotted. I I just want to reiterate. I want an expert's opinion on what should be part of an effective, comprehensive FCSS program. I don't feel that myself or anyone on council has the qualifications to be able to pick and choose what should and shouldn't be part of FCSS services. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll just turn it in for Counselor Taylor. Should we put your name down here? I feel about the um scope of contract services that's presented to us. Meets what I'm looking for, and I'm doing a comparison with four different municipalities. I'm sure they're gonna come back and say this is what these municipalities do. This is what you do. And, you know, this could be a cost saving. You know, thing, so I I'm fine with what I'm seeing in this report, and I will not be voting in favor. And Counselor Taylor.
Um. Yeah, um. I think this isn't supported, Counselor O'Sashick, but uh. Yeah, like I support an independent and objective analysis. What we're doing, the gold bar standard for that would be the uh RCMP K nine. Divisional report that we got on that, which had very clear anal analytics, was very objective and and it uh it was done by an analytical group. That was not emotionally vested with the uh with the with the uh. With the results, and it gave some fairly clear recommendations based, very clear answers based on uh. Based on the numbers. That's uh what I'm hoping for, and I'm hoping for that, that stays within the budget or less. Thanks.
Counsel, any more discussion on this? Direction? And nothing? So I'll hold a question. The committee reached consensus to amend the scope to include recommendations that will improve. The efficiency of the FCSS program within its existing budget or less. Please vote no. And that is um Karen, three. More of my um direction and one against you. I would be the one against. Thank you very much. Full carry on. Sorry, I'm gonna answer the question. Go ahead, Senator.
Madam Chair, just, I believe we have a question from the procedure, which is for clarification.
Thank you, and through the rest of the committee. So again, my question is, are we including that particular aspect of the recommendations in the? The items that are listed in. Uh, item B on page two of the report, and I'll just read it out loud so that we, you know, we're doing. Or are we removing all of these and replacing with just the one? Type of recommendation? So if I may. Is the contractor will provide recommendations in the report on opportunities, if any, to adjust. Hint in social services, E G, and there's some examples there. Are we taking away the examples and replacing it with just this one type of recommendation, or are we adding this? This new aspect to this list of recommendations? Thank you.
Counselor Stausch, thank you.
So my understanding when I voted on this was that this was going to be added as a separate point. So my understanding when I voted on this was that this was going to be added as a separate point item, I. If item B is removed, which wasn't part of the motion. I think that changes the scope substantially, and that wouldn't be something that I would support, because I believe it is important to. Make sure that the other points uh are the other items in point B are addressed. Reducing redundancies, filling service gaps, cost effectiveness, leveraging resources. Uh and other targets as well, I think that's important to make sure that it's in there. My. Understanding was that the motion that just passed would be added as uh maybe point B of the scope. But I'm, that's just me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Ross.
Yeah, for clarity, uh that's my understanding too, that's why I voted for it, because it's still capturing the other, which is point B. But it's also under that lens of of the addition, so uh I would see that uh in addition to. Uh as Counselor Stashik, you know, point B or whatever.
Counselor Taylor, this was your direction, was your intent to have this as D on the um scope of contract?
Yeah.
So it would be in addition to.
I think it's an important clarification to the consultant when he does the work. Who's who's section D is kind of important to us, we're not looking to try to spend more money here.
So CEO, we need a motion to reflect that, or will you capture it as in? Under the scope.
Through the chair, no, I think we're we're clear on the that that it it'd be in addition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a clarifying question now, so the recommended action, the council committee. Uh reached consensus to amend the scope of S C S S comparative analysis as follows. Um are you looking for us to say then to keep A, B, C? Um in addition, like how do we, how do we word that to capture? What comes to uh to regular? Because I'm assuming this comes to regular at some point, correct?
CEO.
Thank you to the chair, to uh members of committee, uh know the intent would. I don't think this item would need to go, this is more of a check in, which is more optimistic for a committee. Type of structure, uh before, we just wanted to do a check in with everybody to make sure. We were on the right track prior to uh going out and issuing it to our procurement process. Um you you know, now that we have those uh those motions, if even if we said. Um that we reach consensus uh. Or um consensus to approve the scope. Of the S C S S comparative analysis as amended, and we have those amendments um. On file, so we we know which ones are gonna be incorporated, that I think that would be. Sufficient.
And this is coming back last September of twenty fourth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through the rest of me, the current um schedule in the R F P is indeed coming back in September, that's right. The committee first, then council.
Counsel, I will need a motion to move this forward. And Counselor Stasher.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that our committee reaches consensus. To amend the scope.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. The men the scope of the S F C S S comparative analysis. As amended. Does that makes, does that make administrative sense?
Through the chair to uh. Be- because we've already made two motions, I would suggest that. That committee reaches consensus to approve the scope of the S C S S comparative analysis as amended. And then.
Two or just the one?
Uh no, we had two, we had the one related to uh looking at the staffing levels, and then we had the one related to. Efficiencies within the current budget parameters. And those have already been captured, so this will be uh so be linear on our minutes, easier.
All right, sir.
Uh I like thanks, CEO, Nasa, for that suggestion, really change, and that is one of the ones.
So I have a question about the budget then, we divided it twenty thousand dollars for this, you're gonna put out a uh. To to get contractors to do this, and if what we put in here exceeds. That twenty thousand dollars, then that will come back to council for additional discussion on the scope of it, correct?
Go ahead, sir.
Through the chair, uh yes, that's correct, so we're going to try and um. Work within the existing budget, make sure that we can do first much within that amount, ultimately at the. We go to market and uh the consultants or the contractors are saying that that's not possible within the given amount of money. Uh either you can change the scope, or you can change the budget, we would bring those options forward to council at that time, but our our intent is to try and uh. Make it work within the. Alex budget amount, okay, thank you.
So counsel, anything else before I call the question, any more discussion? And seeing none, I will call the question. The committee reaches consensus to approve the scope of the F C S S comparative analysis as amended. Please vote no. And that's Karen. And before we carry on, counsel, is there anything else on this um? This report. And seeing nothing, we're going to move on to um. Housing options report, five three four, and that's on each for you, the word. And to administration, please.
Thank you, to the chair, to the rest of the committee, uh in front of you, you have the housing options report. Um so a little bit of background, as a part of our strategic planning session, one of the key. Uh policies that council had discussed and wanted to incorporate into our strategic and tactical plan is. Uh to increase both the availability of options in the supply of housing uh. And in support of two tactics that council has identified in two, three, one, two, three, two. Um we wanted to provide the options uh different incentives and. Uh other regulatory and direct housing options that council can consider when they're looking at accomplishing. That goal when it comes to. Attached, you'll find the town of Hinton housing options report, and really what this. Or is just intended to do is to uh hopefully frame the challenges we currently see it. And talk about what are all the available levers uh for a municipality to take a look at encouraging. Uh. Encouraging housing or to directly create that housing or to achieve council's objectives, so. There are a lot of different levers, as you can see, incorporated into this report um. You know, these um. As as I said at council, that these policies are far reaching, uh typically in a community, they are. Integrated within a lot of uh other areas, so. These, you know, we are at this time recommending that we go forward to stakeholder engagement to get a better uh. Feel for the community, we have gone through a relatively comprehensive process on a integrated housing strategy. But that was uh fourteen years ago, so you know, we we wanna take a look at. Uh these housing strategy options as they exist today. Um and see if there are any major changes, uh so at this time, we are recommending that we go forward to stakeholder engagement. The other thing that I I did wanna bring up is if there are some some policies that we wanna extract and look at these in parallel. Uh we certainly could do that, we spoke about the uh short term rentals policy. Uh with stakeholder engagement, that will push the timelines on the implementation of. Any of these policies, so if we did wanna look at something in parallel with stakeholder engagement, we certainly can, but. Uh with that, I'm open to any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, sir, so if this moves ahead, how soon would you anticipate the engagement to the starting?
Um through the chair. My best estimate at this point would likely be next week.
Next week. Thank you. Counselor Taylor.
I'd like to put a motion forward, it's the one I gave you, Jeff. This time I'll use the one I gave you. Yeah. That uh committee direct administration undertakes stakeholder engagement process related to rental and entry level housing. Through non-financial uh incentives. That includes regulatory and developmental incentives that won't affect the tax rate. So uh can I speak to that?
Certainly.
I believe um we have to narrow down the scope to the issue that's of concern today. Um a lot of the other things that are in the scope we've dealt with over the last ten, fourteen years, maybe not to the degree that we like. But the issue that we're dealing with today is the issue uh that I think that articulates with entry level housing and uh. That's a entry level housing. And uh rental and entry level housing, yeah, rental and entry level housing, which is the issue that the Chamber of Commerce mentioned. And it's also the one that we were, I believe, speaking to when we uh came up with the strategic plan, those two sections in the strategic plan. And that's to try to get uh more affordable housing in 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 town to help for the growth of the uh the town. And uh that's not to say that the other type of housing isn't important. But that this was the priority we identified in those uh those uh plan, so uh. And when I, when I say uh non-financial incentives, um. Again, I'm saying that it's not the responsibility of the municipality to take on uh housing debt, because that could crush us. But it 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 I'm I'm saying that that could include regulatory, developmental. And uh non-financial means that it could include uh um um. Uh land, a land as an lesson, land as an inducement. But just so that it won't affect our tax rate, because we've got enough to worry about with our infrastructure debt. Having to save for water treatment and all those things, without having to take on, again, provincial government responsibilities. So that's essentially what I'm trying to get at there is to narrow the scope. And to uh narrow the tools and the strategies. So that it's uh not gonna involve uh direct municipal tax dollars, because we can't afford that, we don't have enough money. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Stasher.
Madam Chair, I just I would have a call or a clarifying question, and then probably the tomorrow. Uh I just need some clarification on. What non-financial incentives would mean? Uh I guess like to boil it down, does that mean, is that limited to only? Dispensation of taxpayer dollars, or would something like? Donation of land for an affordable housing development to help offset the cost of the development? Is that, would that be considered a financial incentive, or is that non? I'm not sure, that's also a favorite.
I struggled with the wording for this, originally I came up with the wording of uh. Regulatory and developmental incentive incentive, and then I thought exactly like you did, right? We want, we might wanna wanna give land to encourage a developer or something like that, so then I came up with the word. Non-financial, and I did have a conversation with the town manager, he he uh he was one of. He was one that sort of encouraged me to use that term, so that we could include uh plan development. But I came up with that word with a conversation with uh George.
I could follow up, okay, so if we're discussing it uh through that understanding, that this could be. Uh incentives as as long as it's not actual cash outlay of taxpayer dollars. Uh I would be fully in support of this, and I think there's a, that's a great opportunity for the. Town to be able to partner with the developer and put some conditions on the development like. Here's the deal, we'll provide, we'll provide the land, we'll waive offsite levies. And uh in exchange, you provide households that are at least, and then this is just off the top of my head. Not implying that this should be what's adopted, but in exchange, you provide. Single family homes that are at least a thousand square feet, per door price of three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. And I think a really exciting opportunity here that can be done at the time of. Construction and initial sale, that then the town and every other organization can be completely hands off. Is that there's a perpetual affordability model that can be built in to the to the um. Property title on a home where it's only permitted to appreciate by a certain amount per year. For resale purposes, so it can be right on title that the property is only allowed to appreciate two percent per year. That assures perpetual affordability, not just the first time, but every time that property gets sold. It's comparatively affordable to other properties in the community. I think that's a great mechanism, because the town doesn't have to manage it, you don't have to have a third party managing it, it's managed because it's registered on title. Thank you.
I almost want to applaud right now. But I do wanna ask you, when you talk about development incentives, is that like Counselor Stasher was saying, is that offsite levies, frontages? Can you give a brief there?
They're regulatory. Or even um. Uh looking at our uh planning developmental processes and streamlining them to get those as efficient as we possibly can, so if somebody comes with a housing project. You know, we get them, we get, we get them on track, if it used to take uh three months, we get them on track within a month or quicker, stuff like that.
CEO.
Uh through the chair to members of committee, the way that I interpret it is. If it doesn't have a direct budgetary implication to our operating budget, so if we are leaving. Uh offsite levies as an example, that doesn't necessarily have a direct impact to the operational budget, land doesn't necessarily have. So all of those that don't. Uh all of those decisions that administration would have to come to council for budget approval on, or for. Specific approval for more money in the budget, that's kind of the line that we that I look at, non-financial incentives with. It is still looking at incentives um. Just not direct cash uh contributions towards housing projects. Uh if I could just ask a clarifying question, my interpretation of the motion is that when we go for to. Uh stakeholder engagement, we have to decide exactly how that's gonna look like. But the options that have been included in here that do include direct financial uh. We'll say investments from the municipality, those will essentially be taken out, we won't be engaging on those specific policies, all of those will be. We'll be looking at a narrowed down version of this document and. What the communities feel or pulses or the specific uh. The specific leaders that council has authorized through this motion, that's correct.
Go ahead, sir.
That's my, that's my understanding, what I'm trying to do. Uh like if it's a new expect, if it's a new project and we and we uh. And we waive uh what you call offsite levies, that's not revenue that we were getting anyway, so it doesn't affect the tax rate. Yeah, but if we take money out of reserves and throw five hundred thousand dollars towards the housing project, then that will eventually affect. The tax rate in some way. Or if we give them, yeah, it could be other things, thanks.
Okay, good, so um I will definitely be supporting this um direction. Counsel, any more discussions, anything on this before I call the question? And seeing nothing from counsel. For committee direct administration to undertake a stakeholder engagement process related to rental. And entry level housing through non-financial incentives, including regulatory and development incentives. About the outside of the privacy, counsel, please vote no. Counselor Taylor. And that's Karen, thank you very much, counsel, if any, sir, go ahead.
That's not to say that seniors, housing, special needs homes, all this other stuff isn't important, but. We've, we've done various bits. We've, we've done various bits of those in the last ten to fourteen years. And if you want to do more on senior housing on our uh Hootown lands. We can do that as a special initiative, but the priority. The priority for today or maybe the next few months or this year is this topic to get around, getting around this affordability thing. But we can readdress some of these other priorities. In other ways. Thanks.
So Counselor Taylor, can you repeat what you just said? So I.
Oh, I said that uh. We're just emphasizing on a special part of a housing uh problem and crisis that we're facing right now. To look at seniors or special needs or other parts of it um. Uh that, that doesn't exclude us doing that later, or that doesn't mean that those things aren't important. We're just addressing the affordability and the rental because that's the crisis that we're facing right now.
Okay, okay. I just don't want to push senior housing, affordable housing for seniors too far down the road because they're moving. They're leaving us.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I understand that. Thank you.
So um. Anything else before we move on, counsel? And regarding nothing, we will move on to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Counselor.
I guess I'm looking at, and and I realize that this motion we just passed talks about. But it doesn't, doesn't, I'm looking to administration because you also talk about direct housing creations around policies. You know, whether it be rental conversion policies, short-term rental regulations and tenant assistance policies and so forth. So. Um does administration look? Is that going to be part of the stakeholder agreement or stakeholder discussions too, is to look at some of these policies? Or is administration looking to council or committee to discuss some of these options as well? Uh as, because I, I see this as an administrative or municipal policy, some of these things. So what is the intent or where do those come into, into like?
Uh through the chair to members of the committee, the intent of going through or um. Stakeholder engagement is really just to get a better sense for, well, number one are, you know, either. Public or private stakeholders and what they see as the, the biggest issues uh. What kind of housing they see may be needed uh and, you know, with the lens of looking at. Uh rental and entry level housing. What should the town or what do they believe that the town should be doing in order to encourage that type of, that specific type of house development in the town? Uh so really, that's what it's going to uh. That's what it will encapsulate. It'll look at all of these policies and say, you know, here are, here are the options that we have available to us because there are. Uh there are limits to municipal authority and what we can do. But uh but essentially, that's what we're going to be looking at in designing that stakeholder engagement process.
Okay, so if I may follow up. So though these types of things will be offered to the stakeholders, we'll get a better picture. Um I do have one quick question though about a couple of the policies because I've never seen them before um. In particular, the rental conversion policy and the tenant assistance policy. I get them, the great policies are, they seem like, I think, but what does that entail administratively? To, to uh enforce those um uh because I, that's, I guess, because. I mean, that's a big part of, you know, whether it's short-term rentals and enforcement or whatever, but what kind of, what are we looking at with those types of policies in that regard? As just an example.
Rupert Chair, I'm looking at cap policies uh specifically are those tenant assistance policies. Those aren't quite as common in smaller municipalities. They don't have a uh. A good specific answer for you. You know, as part of this, we have to look into these types of policies further, but uh. Yeah, my understanding of them is they, they, they do put parameters into that um into the. Rental market and it does provide some financial incentives in the protection of tenants. Uh the other one they brought up was uh.
Rental conversion.
Oh, rental conversion, yeah, so um. Really, this is about uh likely through uh land use policies, but looking at rental conversion. Incorporated into our land use and uh ensuring that we preserve the existing stock of rental. Of rentals in the town. So if they try to convert them, there's parameters or there's restrictions that might be placed in by a municipality. In order to prevent those from changing from rental or long-term rentals uh into any other form of housing or home house.
Right, so if I have a. Secondary house on long-term renting, I change it into a short-term rental with this, that, that might. Stop that from occurring with rental conversion policy because it doesn't fit my, my land use. Is that it?
It could go from long-term to short-term rentals. Uh you, you, you can address that in a number of different ways. One could be uh. Rental conversion policies or it could be the short-term rental by law.
Okay.
Our policies. So it, it could be dealt with in a number of different ways.
So if I may, then I'm uncomfortable that we go forward and hear from the stakeholders on when they see these, you know, what they think of them and then get. Back. So thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. So CIO, did the previous motion meet the needs of the engagement?
Rupert Chair, yes, yeah, if we're comfortable with that, and I think that narrows the focus a little bit and. It just clarifies what we are and what we are not willing to do. So uh. Yeah, that, that helps. We'll refine this a little bit um. And we may have a better understanding of what counts and just hope of this, or what we're looking for in terms of outcomes. So good.
Just one, yeah, one clarifying question. When you say stakeholder engagement, I guess for those watching, what is the um? The plan for that en- engagement moving forward? Like, I know we had contractor workshops, but what's administration's plan to engage the stakeholders?
Uh through the chair to committee, so we haven't built that out yet, but uh really. Operating from right now and kind of the, the rough plan is that there's a number of. Uh key organizations, I would have to talk to Evergreens probably being uh. Uh the most prevalent, the, the Chamber of Commerce uh, you know. Looking at private partners, the uh it could be realtors or other people with local or specific knowledge when it comes to. Uh housing in the area as well as the public. Okay, so how we do that, that hasn't been fleshed out yet, but generally that's kind of. The uh, the idea of what we do.
Okay, thank you.
And if you do have any uh suggestions on who would be good to reach out to specifically, I'm uh, I'd be happy to. Incorporate that.
Counselor, you're good?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I just have to say how grateful I am that we have six, seven people from the community here listening to our housing discussion. And that we wanted to follow. You could be great ambassadors into the community. So counsel, anything else on this um report? And. According to the law now to um five point five. Alberta Municipalities Resolution, and that's on page forty-seven of your report. Administration.
Thank you, Chair, to the rest of the committee. So um. I, I will touch on everything included, included in this resolution report. Uh but they have been delegated to the appropriate departments. The creation of municipal wildfire prevention committee has been uh delegated to. Uh protective services and the temporary extreme weather sheltering has been delegated to uh community services. Um and they have taken on the healthcare professionals. So I can touch on everything generally. I have. Specific questions, I'll refer to the subject matter experts, but um. On March fifth, uh council made a few motions on bringing forward a total of three resolutions to the Alberta municipalities' resolution process. One was on the healthcare professionals shortage. Uh second on the creation of a municipal wildfire prevention committee. And third, the temporary extreme weather sheltering and so forth for that. So um. Based on that conversation, we've, we've gone and we've done a little bit of research. Uh some other information has come forth. So we wanted to talk to council about. Whether we wanted to continue to pursue the municipal wildfire prevention committee at the temporary extreme. Uh weather sheltering resolutions. And then when it comes to the healthcare professional shortages, we just, we needed to narrow the focus of that uh, that motion down. We take a look at what is out there in terms of the existing resolutions. Uh. So it, it may or may not be relevant, but it could be really what we're asking for on that one. Is to develop a um. The operative clause that would be included. If we know what the specific operative clause is going to be for that resolution. Administration can build a report on a resolution uh around that, but right now um. You know, just looking at the healthcare professional shortage wouldn't be specific enough to make a pass at the convention for. So we need to be specific on what we're asking for. Uh we've recommended that. Uh include as the healthcare professional shortage in Alberta, a call to action that encourages Alberta municipalities to advocate. For the government of Alberta to develop a rural healthcare professionals' action and retention strategy that focuses. On increasing the total number of healthcare professionals in rural Alberta. So that was the operative clause based on conversations we've had with council. Uh but we're looking for some direction, whether that captures it, is that the specific solution that we would be. Looking at.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I, I read uh, just speaking on motion one for now. I read motion one off the councillors or mayor, a councillor and a mayor in another town. And they, they thought it was uh fairly good and they were prepared to take it to their council to see if their council could uh support it or. Bossfully amend it. I thought it was, I thought it was very clear. I mean, only last night I spent half an hour on the phone talking to somebody who has a critical health issue. And has just got a letter uh from uh not having a doctor. So uh like. I don't know the numbers roughly, but I think we're down a few doctors. This person uh can't uh can't get healthcare and they got a, a criti- critical, uh critical illness. It's sort of a. Real priority for people to get doctors. So. The, the only thing that would make slow down a motion like this, and I think this is where the AUMA comes into play. Is that they would, they, I, I searched the AUMA uh resolution website for, see if there was a, a resolution for this. And I couldn't see that there's an active resolution. So this, this is a resolution related to uh rural healthcare and us getting uh more emphasis on uh. Getting uh medical specialists or physicians entirely appropriate. And it's, it's exactly what we're facing. And a lot of the smaller towns around Alberta. I think, I think it's, unless there's already a, unless, unless. AUMA says there's a resolution that does exactly this or is more specific, then we suggest you withdraw it. But I didn't see it.
And, and sir, Chair, no, and I've been working with the. Alberta municipalities staff to take a look at, and they do uh. What they call a matchmaking service. So if there are any municipalities planning on bringing forward a similar resolution, they'll let you know. Uh but there are, there are no active resolutions on this one. That is specific to what we're after. Um and there is no plan as of right now for any other municipality report.
So these um. Options, are they options from Alberta municipalities?
Uh through the chair uh. No, it's, Alberta municipalities won't suggest what the municipality should advocate for. They'll just make sure that whatever they do decide is their priority or their objective with the resolution. It fits within their policies, it fits within, and there's no active resolutions and all those sort of things. But those ones were just. Ideas that uh. We've come up with and some were related to other municipal organizations that. Uh with RMA, maybe they were inspired, so we've taken uh some of those, but those were just developed by administration for options. To that the conversation started, but if there is anything else that we want to look at, it's uh, it's an open forum.
I didn't know if these were their ideas to help us beef out our resolution or. Okay, so counsel, how would you like to give it then? I'm sorry, Counselor.
Um yeah, uh for, uh as to motion one and the healthcare professionals, uh again, I just want to also um. To include not just our doctors, because. You can have as many doctors as you want in your community or need, and if you don't have the, the healthcare professionals behind there caring for the patients. Then it's, it's moot. And right now, we've already seen, and this was just one incident of the hospital. Closing some beds in acute care because of lack of nursing. So as long as we're clear. That we're looking for all healthcare professionals and the shortage uh of across the board. Because uh recruitment is extremely difficult in all departments, uh especially in the rural communities. And so. I just want to make sure that that's captured, that we're not just focusing on doctors. Um we need to focus on all of them. Uh all the different professions and even adding professions potentially to our communities as well, so that we don't. Have to go to the cities for some things as well, because uh I think that's another disadvantage that we have. So as long as that's captured, in my opinion, that needs to be uh included in this, in this resolution. Uh. Yeah, those are my thoughts.
Counselor Sasha.
Madam Chair. Uh like to, please. Um it's motion one. Under the healthcare professionals shortages. The committee provide consensus to include as part of the Alberta municipalities' resolution. On healthcare professionals shortage in Alberta. A call to action that encourages Alberta municipalities to advocate for the government of Alberta. To develop a rural healthcare professionals attraction and retention strategy. That focuses on increasing the total number of healthcare professionals in rural Alberta. If I can speak to it?
Certainly.
Uh I think getting AM involved in advocating to the provincial government about how important this is to rural communities. Uh it is, it's extremely important. This isn't just a, an issue for him, and this is an issue for many rural communities throughout Alberta. And I think the wording of this motion hits on all the key points that everybody's brought up. It's not just doctors, it's all. Healthcare professionals, and then it needs to focus on rural hea- rural healthcare. The, and the cities have their own issues, but some rural communities are left with no doctors and no medical support within their community. It's, it's just that what's kind of challenging. So I feel extra focus needs to be put on the. The challenges that we're all communities are facing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Counselor Taylor?
Uh no, I'm, I'm good. Thanks. That's what I was going to do.
Counselor Hollis.
Yeah, I, I'll be in favor of this and uh I'm actually quite kind of shocked that there isn't another resolution by another community. That we're facing this, and I think um honestly, I think that some communities have given up and are doing things on their own, but I think this is. The right way to go about it is to advocate the provincial government to, to come up with strategies. It's not the municipalities. You know, uh place uh when it comes to healthcare in our community. So this is where it belongs. Uh so I'm, I'm sure we'll have no problem getting a secondary on this one. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I too will support this motion. CIO, when do the resolutions have to be?
No, uh through the chair, it's uh. Uh it's in May, uh I believe it's May thirty, it's the uh. The deadline to have everything submitted.
Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, it's May thirtieth.
So counsel, any other uh discussion, questions, debate? I go ahead, sir.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No debate.
Pardon me?
No debate.
Okay, so I will call to question. My committee provides consensus to include as part of the Alberta municipalities' resolution on. Healthcare functional shortage in Alberta. A call to action that encourages Alberta municipalities to advocate. For the government of Alberta to develop a rural healthcare professionals attraction and retention strategy. That focuses on increasing the total number of healthcare professionals in rural Alberta. Please don't know. And that is carried. Thank you. Counselor Taylor?
So what uh, maybe this is for all these, but what happens now with this?
So what, uh, maybe this is for all these, but what happens now with this? Like, I, I only called two municipalities and they were so eager that they wanted to run to their councils right away and I had to say, well, no, we have. Voted on this yet, right? So the more you get behind you at the A U M A conference, the better the chance that it has of, uh, going through, right? So how, how, uh, what happens with, uh, getting that kind of support?
Uh, through the chair to members, so, uh. Really what happens now is now that we have the operative clause, uh. We'll, uh, administration has to go back, we have to build. We have to build that report and that resolution around it, uh, to come back to council, but in the meantime, if you have that operative clause, I think it's, it's wise to. At least start, uh, you know, talking with other municipalities, who maybe with a second, uh, cause we will need to. Onboard a seconder, and typically those seconders are the partners in the development of this, so they will. Take a look at what we wrote, they'll suggest wording, so if there is, uh. You know, through the political channels, if we can, uh, obtain a seconder who's willing to do this, then we could start working with them. We can provide them the wording, even I offered a clause, start working. Uh, start working with them on that, just one thing to keep in mind is whoever seconds that, there is a new policy that. Their population has to be under twenty-five hundred or over ten thousand, uh. We are considered to be under ten thousand according to Alberta municipality policies, just because of the, uh. This specific census that they, so we are under ten, so we need somebody over ten or under twenty-five hundred, so.
Any more, sir?
Um. So, uh, what do you want, like us to tell you who that is, or what, or what, because we don't have a lot of time here, mess around, right?
Uh, no, through, through the chair, uh, members of council, at, at this point, you don't need to let me know who that is, uh, you know, I think. You know, even amongst councils, you know, or we can, we can start reaching out to specific municipality if, if we'd like, but. You know, I would love to counsel to talk with your counterparts at other municipalities and see if anybody would be. Willing to second, uh, and if they are, they can send us, uh, uh, send us an email, council can talk about it, but if. They would like that to be the secondary, so at this point, we don't need to know specific names, uh. But something that will need to identify, but I would ask that council.
Well, but to get a seconder, I would need something that I would be able to send that person so they could take to their council to get the permission. Seconded and worked with us. Would that, would you give us something like that?
Yeah, uh, I, I will.
Even if it's a draft, some has draft all over the page?
Yeah, uh, o- once we have that, and even in the meantime, I could provide operative clause lots, uh, you know. You know, we just had a, went through the municipal leaders' office and even before the operative clause was drafted. Uh, like we just did, uh. Communities were already connecting and talking about seconding and, and getting that connection, so you can do that preliminary, you could share that operative clause that we've just. Approved, um, and share that with communities and ask for their support and second, second. Uh, at, at any point in time, if they're not comfortable with it, there's a divergent opinions on the direction of their resolution, we can find another seconder. Uh, I think the, that clause that we just approved at this point is sufficient to find a second.
So everything that comes out to the words, uh, it therefore resolve that is what you're calling operative clause, okay?
That's kind of the main ask of, uh, yeah.
Could you send that to me in a block?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, so my concern with that, you know, seven councillors going out to all the municipalities that they know. Under twenty-five hundred, over ten thousand. So then you have municipalities saying, well, they asked me, or they asked me, so I would prefer to. To contact them and then send that list to C A O. And he, or administration will contact them rather than. All lost, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, let's not just go out as a letter from the town of Intan to all the qualifying municipalities. Saying that we're making this motion and we're looking for a seconder, wouldn't that be easier?
Um. Through the chair to members of committee, I think we'd get a lot of letters back, um, you know. I think the majority of the municipalities in Alberta are under twenty-five hundred, so we'd be getting a lot of, uh, letters that then we'd have to choose, you know. Uh, what I would suggest is even as a part of the debrief for council, even if we ask the mayor to reach out to, uh, specific communities. Uh, that we think might be strategic, uh, cause typically, who you choose as your seconder. Is usually strategic, usually wanted in a different part of the province, you want them to be, you know, very different from you, because you just. You garner support through, uh. You know, uh, from different municipalities, if we just went, say, next door to Edson, that it is too localized to have that broad range. Now they wouldn't be applicable, but that type of idea, but I would say that amongst council, if you delegate a point person to seek out a seconder. I think that would be probably an easier way to go about it, just because I think we've got a lot of letters back from a lot of municipalities. I think this is something that's very, uh, near and dear to a lot of these, uh, small communities.
Okay, sure.
And I appreciate that, does that need to be a direction from council? And the other question, end of May, sounds like it's spoken away, but it's really no. So I don't want to. The risk, running into any roadblocks with this, and want to make sure it moves forward quickly, so. How would that process go then, if you're. Seeking the mayor to, to undertake this activity?
Uh, through the chair, the, all the resolutions I have ever been a part of, it was more of. It wasn't really a formal process, it was just really done by, you know, either a mayor or a councillor, just, uh, you know. Talking with them to ask if he can reach out to a few communities and find a seconder. Uh, once he has done that, council can decide, uh, you know, whether we want to accept that, and that would have to be done probably formally to. Set them as a secondary municipality, they'd have to be jointly, uh. They would have to be on the resolution submit, so. We can do it that way, uh, you know, if council wants administration, you know, I'm sure we can, uh. We can talk to, uh, most municipalities, I would be eligible to second, and we could obtain some support from, uh, from their council. I have no problems with that, it's just the way I've always done it, it's always been, uh. Uh, more of a council to council, or, uh, but you know, through the political channels that we found. Second here, but it's up, it's up to council to do that.
My concern is just, you know, seven councillors going out to. You know, a hundred municipalities, having, you know, so, and council house.
Sorry, and through the chair, the one thing I will say is that some point in time, we will need to appoint a, uh. Appoint person to pursue this, and that's not a member of administration, typically, that's a member of council, somebody who is going to be willing to. Uh, speak to this on the convention floor with all the other municipalities, uh. To debate on behalf of a municipality, if that's required, uh, so somebody will have to kind of adopt this. Usually that, that person would be the one seeking out the seconder, uh, you know. Preparing the speaking notes, cause you do a very short amount of time to, to make your pitch, uh. All of those, uh, all of that work, uh, by council would have to be done by somebody, um, so I would. You know, what we can do is bring this forward, once we have a draft available for some, for committee to appoint somebody. Uh, then we can go seek out a seconder at that point as well, and that's the other option.
You know, the mover of the initial resolution is certainly a good. Counselor Halls.
No, I, based on what. Uh, C A O was just said, I'm gonna pick myself a little queue, because it's, it's gonna come back with us, and, uh, we're gonna have that discussion. You know, sees or.
Thank you.
I think it's an important topic for us to make a motion to, uh, direct the mayor or the deputy in his absence to make a, uh. Uh, to make a, uh, to look for a seconder for this motion. And fortunately, fortunately, our deputy, deputy has talked to lots of people on this, and fortunately, the town of Gold Lake is over ten thousand, so. That's where I would certify with that, but my motion would be that we direct the, uh, mayor in his absence, the deputy mayor to seek a seconder for this important motion. That would be. And I would start with the, uh, mayor of, uh, Gold Lake, because I'm sure you'll say yes in a, in a second.
Council. And Counselor Halls.
Yeah, I was gonna make that originally, because I, I think the mayor's the best choice on any of these that do, and find a second there, but. Um, I just kind of held back, because there is that conversation to have of, of, uh. Another possible councillor gets bringing forward, but I think the mayor is a perfect choice, or deputy mayor to, to seek out. Uh, at least get the ball rolling, is what we're, we're considering, and would you, you know, want to be a seconder, and then we can decide who's gonna. Stand up and debate if, and that kind of stuff at a later date, so I'll be in support of that.
Counselor Stascha.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm in favor of the motion to raise some clarity to this process and, uh. Saves the trouble of having seven councillors reaching out to the same hundred communities in Intan, asking if they want to support. Or potentially the other side of the, uh. Uh, the other swing of the pendulum is no councillors reach out, because they all think someone else is going to, so this brings clarity and all support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, you're welcome, go ahead, sir.
Well, and the other thing, I think, is that there's more than seconders, there's also, uh. Every motion has, uh, if you have, if you have a motion at the A U M A that has more names on it, uh. There's seconders, but then there's supporters, right? You know what I'm saying? I don't know, I can't remember exactly what they're called. Uh. But they don't just have the second or they say, it was just like five communities supporting this motion, and they are this, 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 this. So we're not just looking for a mayor, deputy mayor to seek seconders, but we're looking for them to seek. Uh, supporters of the vote as well, is that, uh, is that, uh, uh, do I remember the A U M A process right?
Uh, through the chair to members of committee, I'm not familiar with, uh. A process where you, you have a listing of supporting communities, I think, the only. They, they list any of the communities that are to support and have indicated support. So we, that's an option available to us to have, let's think of, uh, communities and support as well, um. Our process that I've ever done for a resolution, but, uh. We can certainly, certainly look into that as part of the.
Well, that. That, that would be, it, that would be, uh. A seconder and or, um, supporters for the A U M A resolution. On the, on the motion of, uh, healthcare professional shortages.
And Counselor Taylor, because we really wanted to, um, crystal clear on all of our directions or motions. Would you consider adding twenty-twenty-four in front of Alberta?
For the, uh, two thousand twenty-four resolutions. Uh, for the, oh, for the, uh, two thousand twenty-four, uh, yeah, sure, that's good, yeah, yeah.
Counselor Halls.
Yeah, I, I, I can't comment on the supporter part of it, I don't recall ever. Whenever he comes up, it's two people come up and it's the person that brings it forward and it's a seconder, but. I mean, I'm not against having supporters, I mean, the biggest thing is getting the votes there as support, but I mean, if there. If there's a place for it, I'm fine with it, but I'm more wanting, we need to have that seconder to move forward with any resolution. Uh, you know, so, but if we can find other supporters, and that's part of the process, that's what we need, thank you.
C A O.
Um, through the chair, it doesn't appear that there's any specific, um. Uh. Item other than the mover and the seconder as a part of the resolution process, but, you know, when it comes to. Supporters, they don't have to be specifically recognized, but when it does come to the convention for. You know, it is a good idea to be looking for those supporters, whether they're recognized in the document or not, uh. You know, that's a part of bringing forward a successful resolution is having communities behind you, uh, and willing to vote in.
Right now, I'm thinking about, um, F C S coming up and all the municipalities in Alberta who will be going to S S. For, um, S C M, and the opportunity to talk to them about this resolution, I only want to present. Yes, all right, anything else, Council, on this, before I call a question? Okay. The committee direct the mayor or deputy mayor to seek a seconder and or supporters. For the twenty-twenty-four Alberta municipalities' resolutions on the healthcare professionals shortage.
We just said the move, you don't have to vote to motion.
Please hold no. And that is carried. Council, anything else on this topic before we move on, please? And we're gonna move on to, um, go ahead, sir.
Well, we have two other matters to address, is that correct?
Oh, we will.
Oh, you, oh, I heard you were moving on to the next topic, sorry.
So, was there something else on resolutions that you wanted to talk about?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to talk about the temporary extreme weather sheltering, uh, if I could, um. And I'd like to, uh, uh, on the recommendation, understanding that City of Red Deer is already prepared. To bring a resolution, um, I would, I would look to motion one to rescind our original. Um, and then look, you know, to, to second, uh, the, uh, City of Red Deer's resolution. So they can move the committee directs administration to refer motion, R C dash two four zero three oh five, uh. Dot oh nine on creating an Alberta municipalities' resolution on provincial support for temporary warming shelter at council. Uh, be rescinded.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll, uh, again, to speak to it, I think, being as how, you know, we've been asked to be a seconder. Uh, for another resolution, I don't see it necessary that we, uh, take the ball with this one, and, uh, we, we, uh, support, especially. I'm assuming because City of Red Deer, we fit into the criteria that we can be seconders, yeah, okay, thank you.
Council, we do have a direction on the floor, I need, um, debate, discussion. And here, we don't see nothing, um, the committee direct administration to refer motion, R C dash two four zero three oh five. Dot zero nine on creating a. A B municipalities' resolution on provincial support for temporary warming shelters at council, was a recommendation to rescind. It's not now.
I said, I think, sorry, for, is it just council to rescind, you know, recommendations, and there's, to rescind, is that? Or is it a recommendation necessary? Is it, okay, my apologies, thank you, Madam Chair. There.
And, I'll just go with that, sir.
Sorry, just before you call the question, just in terms of consistency, that wording seems weird, like it says. Uh, to, 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 sorry. Um, refer motion on creating resolution to council. Doesn't it usually say, don't usually word that as to a future meeting of council? I get that's what it's, that's what it's saying, but it just seems awkward to somebody that might be reading minutes.
Go ahead.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, uh, I agree, we can say, uh. To a future council meeting. Okay, yeah. With a recommendation, oh, okay.
Like to propose that a name, if that's okay with you, Council Halls?
Yes.
In a friendly way.
It's not friendly. It's not friendly.
Wanted to comment, that's not a name, it's just a suggestion. And Councilor Halls, it is okay, there is an agreement, there is no opposition, then it can just go forward.
Good.
You have a thumbs up.
Yeah.
Can you read this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's coming to a future meeting council for recommendation, that's the intent of this, so, yes.
Okay, I'll call the question. The committee directs administration to refer motion R C dash four zero three zero five. Dot zero nine on creating a A B municipalities. Resolution on provincial support for temporary warming shelters in the future, council, opening with a recommendation to rescind. Council, please don't know. I'm not scared, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I think, obviously, the second part of that is whether we want to support. The City of Red Deer's resolution to, uh. Achieve a similar, similar goals, and I would like to move motion two. That committee provide consensus to support in principle, seconding the City of Red Deer's resolution on creation of dreadful shelter strategy. Madam Chair, I don't think I need to speak to it.
Council, we do have a direction, any discussion before I call the question? In mind. The committee provide consensus to support in principle, seconding. The City of Red Deer's resolution on creation of a provincial shelter strategy, council, please don't know. I'm not scared, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Or my question, we say in principle, because, um, there could be wording there that we haven't, uh, seen or we're not comfortable with.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct, all we've been provided by the City of Red Deer at this point is a, um. We'll call it a rough draft there. Therefore, that operative clause, uh, which is. To create a comprehensive strategy relating regarding the location, construction process for homeless shelters throughout the province. This detailed strategy will provide definitions, project management, governance, and role clarity for the government, Alberta municipal governments. Applicable community, so. That is a rough draft of what they tend to bring forward, uh, but obviously, once the. The resolution has been drafted, that will be come forward to council, council will need to approve it at that point in time. And once again, appoint a speaker if needed, as a, as the second.
Thank you very much, so, council, are we also going to entertain a direction on, um, the creation of a municipal welfare, and go ahead, sir?
Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to move motion one regarding inclusion of a wildfire prevention committee. The committee directs administration to refer motion R C two four zero three zero five point zero eight. On creating an A B municipalities resolution on the creation of a wildfire prevention, wildfire prevention committee. To a future council meeting, with recommendation to rescind.
Speak to it, yes, please.
So. I I really want to get, I just put this out there, so we had a thing, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm pointing to discuss. Really want to get council's opinion on if they think that the steps that the province is taking already addresses our concerns adequately to vote. Uh, wildfire prevention, or if we still feel that this is an unfortunate thing to have come forward. So if council thinks that this is important, please defeat this motion. Thank you.
Councilor Keller.
Yeah, um, the reason why I'll defeat it is because if you look at paragraph two of the letter, where we got by the honorable thought of all. Minister of of Forestry and Parks. The only initiatives that's that even tries to become close with what we're doing here. Because all the other paragraphs are related to action items that the forestry department is doing. Is paragraph number two, that's, uh, uh, long term strategy for wildfires impacting municipalities outside forest forest protection area. And express support for municipalities of Alberta's leadership. So that seems to be kind of close, the rest of these are just sort of, uh, paragraphs about, uh. Things that they're doing or smaller order strategies that they're working on where they will get some in input from people. But paragraph number two, the reason why paragraph number two is, uh. Not even relevant in this letter to address this issue, is that what we're considering is we're considering things. Communities at risk, uh, near or within the forest protection areas. They're talking about, uh, communities outside the forest protection areas, the forest protection areas, so those areas on the green. Forestry map that have all the trees. On the eastern slopes of the Canadian Rockies. Those are, those are the ones with third of most risk, those are the ones that we're worried about, there's no overlying provincial committee where municipalities can get together with one another. To exchange ideas or to talk to the province, uh, and to give direction or to have have a. Somewhat of a say in the province on how things, things are going. This is just a, a summary of, uh, what we're doing, uh, you know, we're doing this, this, this is almost a, you have to say it, a go away letter. So, I, this, this letter, this letter doesn't support a dropiness initiative of mine, not at all.
Thank you, sir, fire chief, can you add, do you have any knowledge of what the provincial government is doing?
Uh, to the chair, to all committee, uh, exactly what they've stated in the letter from the honorable minister, uh. They are doing currently, and they are funding a lot of projects like the Fire Guard Project, uh, Fire Smart, uh, program in its entirety. Is being sponsored and supported throughout the province, there is a resolution with the rural municipalities, rural municipalities of Alberta, which, uh. Is asking for funding in the. White zone, are they, the, uh, outside forest protection area, which is what's referred to in paragraph two, as Councilor Taylor pointed out. Uh, so, there is. A lot of talk, there is a lot of action right now with, with wildfire prevention and preparation. Uh, for this upcoming season, uh, but if it's the wish of council that we personally are committed to pursue this. We would. Develop a resolution to that effect.
Go ahead, sir, thank you.
Well, the more direct question would be, there is no, uh, provincial, uh, committee of wildfire specialists in municipalities working together on a, uh. Municipalities at risk in the forest protection areas on eastern slopes, they're at risk of fire, working with the, uh. Working on a very broad scale, uh, at the committee level that we're talking about.
Through my, through the chair to the committee, I I don't believe there's a, any active committee, uh, with, uh. Elected official representation and state language with the Alberta Fire Chiefs Association and, uh, subject matter experts. And the government sitting together as a committee, uh, at this point. No, I, I'm not aware of any.
Because I'd just like to remind you that when the multiplied needle committee met and the multiplied needle were threatening communities. That was a very well attended, uh, committee and municipalities were in. And, uh, very concerned about that, and this is a, this is a, this is a concern that could cause me to act quickly. Thanks.
Councilor Halls?
Yeah, uh, I'm of the mind listening to and and reading. The letter that I don't think is going to fit the needs that we, that are necessary. Um, I think the important thing is that we're very clear on what it is that we're, is going to be different. If we were to put this resolution forward, this is what's happening, this is what we're proposing to be different, so it's clear to. The, the, the A M A group, you know, that it's, it's something different than what's already being done and how it's going to benefit them, so. I think there's still, I I still have appetite to rescind or to to, uh, go against this, uh. Rescinding of this and continuing on, and it gives the administration also an opportunity to dig a little bit deeper at this point. Uh, and to come back to a set of later dates, you know, if there's any changes or anything that they find, so I'll, I'll be speaking against this, thank you.
So my thinking is, I am not opposed to moving this forward. To a regular sound, a regular meeting, and that will give me time and all of council time to, to reach out to. To the government and see what they actually are doing. I don't want this to be a waste of time, you know, for administration, but I don't want to pull this. And prevent it from going to regular, in the event that something gets picked up, go ahead.
Uh, through the chair, just for clarity, council's already made this motion at council, uh, to go forward with this, so if, uh, if we don't. If council doesn't refer it to council, um, administration will continue on, we will build.
Oh, okay.
Uh, no action is needed if we want to continue, if we want to, if we're satisfied with. Uh, the measures outlined, the additional information that provided, then we would need to refer this to regular, uh. To talk really about rescinding the motion, but, uh, no actions needed if we want to continue on, uh. With this process.
So if you continue on with that and talk with, um. Our units about it, they would inform you. As to what the government is doing, and that this is not necessary, like they have the warming shelters and the. Anything else?
Through the chair, they won't. They won't really speak to the specific items, um, and what's being done about them, as of right now, from both. From the province, uh, really, they'll take a look at it with the lens of their own policies, uh. How are we structuring that resolution and are they going to accept it, uh, is this applicable enough, and they'll make recommendations of. You know, this isn't applicable enough to the whole of the province or, um. You know, this is similar to other resolutions that are currently, um. In place, uh, you know, they'll make those types of suggestions, but they won't say. The government's doing this and should be going, you know, this isn't something that we need to do. Okay.
Good thing, I see a lot of nodding, people agreeing with what you're saying, so. It comes through, Sasha.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so after hearing from everyone else on the council, I just wanted to say appreciate you sharing your opinions. Because what you said was reflecting a lot of what I was thinking as well, I'm not going to be supporting this, the motion to rescind either. I think it's important that the frontline communities at risk have a voice at a table with a bunch of subject matter experts. And the government, provincial governments here, so that they can understand what they're missing and they can understand. The unique risks that those, uh, communities are facing when it comes to wildfire, rather than getting it secondhand. Impartial in in smatterings of data collection through various means. I appreciate the letter from Minister Mullen and everything that the province is intending to do. For wildfires, but I can't see that having a committee of the communities at risk do anything to hurt that initiative. And I think you could always support it, so I'm not going to speak supporting a motion to rescind, thank you.
Who, sorry, who made this initial? Need to, oh, yeah.
I accidentally, I accidentally pressed the one, I didn't mean to press, I pressed four, I didn't mean to do that, so I can change. Thanks.
Yeah, I've not called the question yet, so.
Oh, it's okay, it didn't matter.
So, council, if there's no further discussion on this. I will call the question. The committee directs administration to refer motion R C dash two four zero three zero five dash four dot zero eight. On creating a A B municipalities resolution on the creation of a wildfire prevention committee. In a future council meeting with a recommendation to. Please don't know. And that's carried.
You defeated Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, that is defeated. Councilor Keller.
Would it be appropriate for me to put forward a motion for the mayor, the deputy mayor to look for a seconder for her, um. Uh, resolution to create a municipal wildfire prevention committee?
Through the chair, yes.
So I would like to do that. And in support of that, we already have that wonderful letter we sent out to all the, uh. Well, the communities, except we only need to send it out to those at risk of the eastern slopes of the province. You just have to change the last part, I think.
Council, we do have a direction on the floor.
That's correct. That's what I, that's what I meant, yeah.
Uh, any discussion on this? And it's everybody good for wording. I'm not seeing any nodding, I'm not seeing a lot of opposition, so I'll call the questions. For committee direct the mayor or deputy mayor to seek a seconder, council or supporters for the twenty twenty four Alberta municipalities resolution on. Creation of a municipal wildfire prevention committee, council, please don't know. And that is carried, thank you, council. Now, I believe that completes this. Any more discussion on this before we move on? Seeing none, we're going to move on to, uh, report five point six, Rex Center Condition and Viability Assessment. And that is page fifty six on your agenda, C A O.
Chair, I am well, I'm a solid to Mr. Russo.
Thank you, C A O, thank you, it's to the chair, forward this on to Miss Weber, to lead us in the conversation, it will hold on, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Russo and C A O Nancic, and through the chair to committee. Uh, so on February twenty four, twenty twenty four, council administration had a strategic planning workshop. In which, uh, the Rex Center and next steps for the Rex Center was a robust discussion, as a result of that discussion. Administration has brought forward a report, uh, to look at and review with council. A proposed scope for a condition assessment and a viability assessment for the Rex Center. You'll see in your report that we have outlined what the proposed scope would be, and it includes a physical and structural evaluation. Environmental, electrical and mechanical evaluation. Financial, regulatory and safety evaluation. And review the possible functional obsolescence of the facility. This is a much more robust, uh, scope of work than was done previously in twenty eighteen. Again, that was mostly discussed in the workshop, but has been previously reviewed by administration and council. I'm open to any questions you may have for administration.
Thank you, Miss Weber, council, what questions do we have, other men, Councilor Halls?
Uh, no questions at this point, but I'd like to move the committee, seek consensus, requesting administration. To bring the Recreation Center Condition and Viability Assessment Report to the April second, twenty twenty four regular meetings. Uh, as discussed, and if I can quickly speak to it, um, I mean, this is, this is the first, I think, action that needs to be taken. Um, you know, uh, we discussed in our strategic planning, but knowing what that building, uh, brings to the table, um, understanding. You know, uh, whether or not it's, it's even feasible to, uh, expand on it over what we're looking at, and then. Next step after that is to look at the financial, uh, side of things, so I think it's just, we need to know where we stand with this building, and I, I'm, I'm. Confident and or comfortable with what I see the scope being, um, you know, and and the fact that it's coming, uh, from already reserved. That we've earmarked for this, this project, so, uh. Yeah, I I I'd look forward to seeing report April second, so. yeah, I, I, I'd look forward to seeing report April second, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I support it too, and, uh, I think timing's appropriate, because I did look at the two thousand fourteen, um, geotechnical and structural engineering evaluation that we got on council back in June of two thousand fourteen, and that did say that, uh, ten years to redo that sort of work on the structural and geotechnical was appropriate. And then, uh, the, I looked at the mechanical and engineering stuff we got in two thousand, it was two thousand seventeen that that report came in, and I said that doing that at this time would be appropriate as well. Uh, so, to, uh, redo it before we're gonna make major decisions at the ten and five or six-year interval for those two or three items seems, uh, timely anyways. Why is the budget so, the, the range on the budget seems very broad? So why is that?
Okay, definitely. Thank you. Through the chair, the counselor, Stuart, tell you that the reason we gave to that range between seventy five to two hundred thousand was exactly that, if you look at the key hitters that we've identified, such as not limited to environmental, electrical, financial, and the obsolescence of this project. We, at this point, would not know what depth of analysis we will have to do. So the way we'll attack this, this project would be to work with a successful proponent, with a scope, and this is how council approves it, uh, when we get to council in the next week. Then we'll be able to identify exactly how deep we're gonna go, so I'm gonna give you an example. Say if we have to do a structural, uh, numerical analysis, that means they will tell us, okay, you will have to look at the columns, per se, or you may have to look at the, um, classes at the same time, that would mean forty hours of work, that would equal to X. So what we wanted to do was, once council gives us the go-ahead, it doesn't mean that we're gonna aim for two hundred thousand. We're gonna, of course, aim to keep the budget concise and specific, but we believe that between seventy five and based on experience in the past, you're probably looking between nothing less than seventy five, and we should not be talking to two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Good, Counselor Taylor.
Well, I do have another question, but I can't wait until everybody's asked theirs.
Okay, I have counsel Haas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I guess one question too is, is this the entire building, like it's gonna include the arenas and everything, because, okay, I see you're nodding heads, so we'll have a very good look at the entire structure, so, awesome, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Taylor.
Does this include geotechnical work? It did in two thousand fourteen, is it, are we gonna do it now?
Mr. Burso?
Yes, through the chair to, to, yes, we will be doing the geotech, or whatever, again, same analogy I used on the structural, we'll take the same practice, so some of the information that we have, or even not gonna be created, but there has been probably some movement, the foundations may have moved, hopefully not, and then we'll look a little bit more into something to that.
Okay.
Good, Counselor Taylor.
Well, I got one more. I do.
Go ahead, sir.
I don't wanna muddy the waters by talking about plebiscite right now, but, uh, so I'll talk about the timing of when all this work's coming through. Will, will all this, uh, rec center work, uh, say be completed by, um, that work that we're talking about right now be completed by, uh, in a reasonable period of time? So that if I wanted to put forward a notice of motion for an informed plebiscite question to be developed in the spring for the next, uh, election cycle at the election, that I would be able to do that? So when's this stuff gonna be ready and how's it gonna fit in, but when we're gonna have some of our recommendations for a rec center, because then I would like to introduce the plebiscite topic, and I'd like to do it in enough time that we can get an informed plebiscite question for the next election, should council decide to do that.
Right, sir. Through the chair, that the intent is to have this condition assessment and the go-forward steps to a decision point long before the twenty twenty five October election, so six months before. Uh, nine months before.
I think that's a, that's a reasonable estimate, yeah.
Nine months, yeah.
Good, sir.
Yes.
So counsel, we do have a consensus request by a little far, is there any more discussion? Before I have a question, I'll say. The Committee Seek Consensus Requesting Administration to Bring the Recreation Center's Condition and Viability Assessment Report to the April second, twenty twenty four, regular council meeting, as discussed. Please, will know? And that is carried, thank you, counsel. Counsel, anything else on, um, this report before we move on? And nothing, I do have to call for it right now, a little seven and a three. Thank you very much. Uh, eighteen eighteen, we're calling.